Welcome to this Monday City Council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call, please.
Mayor Marchand.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Frini.
Here.
Council Grasso.
Here.
Council Dwyer.
Here.
Council Reynals.
Here.
Council Penelakis.
Here.
Council Whitehouse.
Here.
Council Smith.
Here.
Council Hines.
Here.
All right, if everybody would stand, please, for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance to be led by Councilor Smith. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move on now to accept the minutes of the August 7, 2006, meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Our next segment is the public comment session. This evening we have thirteen speakers. This is one place where I'm generally a really nice guy, and that works well most of the time, but one of the places where that can have its limits is the unwitting, perhaps unwittingly, folks sometimes will take advantage of that kindness, especially as it relates to the three-minute rule. And over time, I've had people kindly tell me that, watch at home, they say, "It's great, people, it's friendly, it's wonderful." But first it's three, then it's three and a quarter, then it's three and a half, and then all of a sudden it's a treatise. And the people that are trying to follow the rules end up often being the ones that get hurt by their trying to play by the rules. So, in what is the polite attempt, before we go on to new technology that's been discussed, what we'll do is, at the thirty-second mark, it's three minutes, there are thirteen people, so three minutes a person, please speak on the subject on which you wrote this evening. There'll be a thirty-second warning. And what I would ask is, and I think this is where people get in trouble, is they decide that with ten seconds to go, this is the time to begin the second point. And that puts people in a position where you are either getting cut off right at the beginning, or it creates a situation where people playing by the rules are the ones that get hit pretty hard. So, I'll ask you, at the thirty-second mark, to try to, if you've finished where you're at, and kind of close it down at that point, at the three-minute mark, I'll ask you to stop. Nothing personal, but we're trying to be fair. So, with that, our first speaker this evening, who'll be speaking on the cleanliness of Market Square, is Rebecca De Maraki.
Super quick. It's like I forgot for one week. Fifteen hundred and seventy-six cigarettes. And we do it every week, Market Square. And the reason we do it is because my family loves Market Square. We live in Hampton Falls, but we come here a lot. And it's hazardous to the environment, and it detracts from the natural beauty of the brick sidewalks. We actually get down and dig them out of the sidewalks every week. I have some information on litter as a cigarette problem in Market Square especially.
Please bring it up, you can give it to the city clerk, and we'll distribute that. Be sure not to drop this on your way out or something, that would be the worst irony of all. Wow. Well, thank you for doing that. And this past weekend, I was thanking the folks of the Blue Ocean Society, who were working with several beachfront areas, including Newcastle, and doing exactly some of that. It's amazing how much they pick up. So, appreciate, there's a lot of effort that goes into that. Our second speaker this evening, dealing with Pierce Island, is Frank Roth.
Good evening. On August 30, the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on Dogs voted unanimously to request the city council reverse their August 7 decision to temporarily ban unleashed dogs on Pierce Island. This action followed a similar vote by the Pierce Island Committee on August 10, when it voted four to one to recommend Portsmouth City Council rescind its actions requiring dogs on Pierce Island to be leased at all times. Both committee votes were the result of thoughtful discussions among their members and the public after both committees had a chance to evaluate the complaints that led to your August 7 ruling, and what action should be appropriate in response. As a result of that ruling, the Pierce Island Committee, the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on Dogs, and the Portsmouth Dog Owners Group, which I'm president, are dedicated to a course of action that will better define and improve the use of Pierce Island for dog owners and non-dog owners. Both the Pierce Island Committee and the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on Dogs recommended the formation of an ad hoc committee to put together an outreach program for the city council's approval before the end of the year. And this ad hoc committee will likely include members of the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee, the Pierce Island Committee, the Portsmouth Dog Owners Group, and in all likelihood, they will meet with representatives of the city, city clerk's office, the police patrol division, the recreation department, the legal department, and perhaps other parties, to see whether their ideas come forward. And we all agree that improved signage, installation of dog waste bags, and a better educated public are going to be a part of the recommendation that will come before the city council, and there very well may be a better process for reporting and investigating complaints involving dogs and their owners, which will be evaluated as well. On August 21, I ask the city council for their help in this matter, and pledge that we will work to earn the support that you give us. Please rescind your temporary ruling to require all dogs be leashed at all times on Pierce Island, and let us work toward a more balanced recommendation. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening, also on the same issue, is Denet Page.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager, my name is Denet Page. My husband, my dog, and I live at 25 Hunking Street. I'd like to briefly support the recommendations made by both the Blue Ribbon Committee on Dogs and the Pierce Island Committee, that the restrictions on off-leash dogs in Pierce Island Park be rescinded, and that a working group be appointed to address issues of public policy on the island. As a responsible and vigilant dog handler with a well-trained animal, I have high standards for my pet and any others that I may encounter in our three-day excursions over to Pierce Island. And I have high regard for the other dog owners who frequent Pierce Island, who not only provide supervision of their pets, but provide stewardship to the park by daily picking up waste, garbage, and about anything else you can think of, people dumping in a public space. By the same token, I have very little tolerance for dog owners who don't get out of their cars to walk their dogs or pick up after them, or who are oblivious to others with whom they share the open space of the island. Responsible dog owners are the worst enemies of ill-behaved dogs and thoughtless masters. And I am confident that an ad hoc group appointed by this council that listens to the dog owners of Portsmouth will report back to you with strong recommendations that address the rights and responsibilities of both dog owners and the general public. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, also on the same topic, is Esther Kennedy.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. I stand before you, as a public school administrator who runs the school district, and know sometimes things we say, decisions we make, we have to take back. And sometimes that can be an embarrassment, sometimes that can be questionable, and sometimes we really have to think what's right within ourselves, but listen to our constituents. I would encourage you, the data's out there, I always ask for data, that everyone showed up at those meetings, there were very few people that were against the changes. Some people that were even against the changes before, when we were looking at the rules originally, came forward and said, "This is outrageous." I would encourage you all to look at this and really think, and let's move on, let's get some doggy bags up if we have to, but let's move on and take down the signs. It only took twelve hours to put them up, and hopefully it takes twelve hours to take them down. I would encourage you to look at the committee, form the committee. If you have real strong opinions as a council, be part of that committee. But we need to do something, we can't keep coming back with these little petty items when we have some major things going on in our city. We have a sewage treatment plant that needs to be looked at, we're giving money to a Sheraton as tax dollars. We have a lot of things going on here, folks, and we need to have you look at those, we need to have you react at those and make some decisions. So, let's move off the dogs, and let's move on to bigger and better things. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, dealing with rezoning, I believe relating to the proposed convention center, is Malcolm McNeil.
My name is Malcolm McNeil, I'm an attorney from Box 815 in Dover, and I represent Harbor Corp, LLC, relative to the Western Hotel and the municipal parking garage. I'm here tonight to object to the two motions for rehearing filed by Ocean Properties and by Dover Realty Trust, they're under Section 11 of your agenda. The standard for granting a motion for rehearing is contained in Attorney Peter Loughlin's book, and it is as follows. It says, "As a general rule, rehearing should only be granted if the petitioner can demonstrate that the board committed technical error, or that there is new evidence that was not available at the time of the first hearing." Furthermore, he goes on to say, "The reasons for granting a rehearing should be compelling ones, and that the board has no right to reopen a case on the same set of facts unless it is convinced that an injustice would be otherwise created." With regard to this case, none of those factors exist. This case and all the materials before you have been discussed at length, both before you and the planning board. The brief history of this case is, you developed and approved a joint development agreement on November 14 of last year, a bonding resolution on December 19. The planning board on May 25 considered this matter at length and made various recommendations. We came before you on July 17. The hearing that night was so long that you agreed to put it over until another evening for deliberations. Everyone was heard, Ocean Properties and Dover Realty Trust were both represented by council. All of the materials that are in the materials that you are considering tonight were discussed at that time. In addition, you had the benefit of this report completed by the planning department in favor of the rezoning. The bottom line from our perspective is, we would like to move on and develop this property. Others would like that not to happen. This rehearing request is a condition, we presume precedent, for Ocean Properties now to take the city to court. Again, we believe that absolutely no we believe that absolutely no grounds exist for this rehearing request, there's no new evidence, and as to all of the legal matters that are contained in this motion for rehearing, they've been addressed by your own attorney in favor of the positions that we've advanced. So, we respectfully request that the motion for rehearing be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the same topic is Tom Keen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Tom Keen, and I represent 976 Realty Trust, an affiliate of Ocean Properties. We have filed a motion for a rehearing, and when I filed that, I did not have the benefit of the lodging hospitality report that I gave to you tonight. And I submitted a letter to each of you tonight with the two pages of that report that are important attached to the letter. We have consistently stated that taxpayer money should not be used to fund this project, nor is it necessary to add ten feet of height to the building to build twenty-one residential condominiums. Harbor Corp has consistently stated that it needs that to be economically viable. The lodging hospitality report that you have before you tonight, it is an independent publication, uses data received from the hotels. Based on Harbor Corp's data, it is the thirty-ninth most profitable hotel in the United States, thirty-ninth. Out of two-hundred-and-fifty hotels that submitted their data, Harbor Corp shows per-room revenue that's higher than two-hundred-and-eleven. And now they come to the city and they say they want to use the taxpayers' dollars to subsidize their next project. They want to build a building that's going to be ten feet higher than what zoning previously permitted, and will block the cityscape because they want to build twenty-one luxury residential condominiums. You know, the city has looked at a lot of economic data with respect to that, and it's accepted Harbor Corp's word and numbers when it submitted it. But I would ask you, as councilmen and councilwomen, to look at the numbers that are presented in lodging hospitality report, look at the per-room revenue that was just released a couple weeks ago, and compare that to the information that you previously received. Again, this report says they're the thirty-ninth most profitable hotel in the country based on their numbers, and they say they can't do this project without our help. We would ask you, why are they going to, why do they need to use our taxpayer money to build their project, and why do they need to build a building that's higher than necessary for the purpose of constructing twenty-one condominiums for their own economic profit? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, dealing with the Pierce Island dog issue, is Neil Cohn.
Thanks, folks. I am a maniac, I apologize, but I spent many hours volunteering and working in Portsmouth. I just wanted to reinforce, I appreciate Council Penelakis's work with the dog committee, I think he did a good job that night. And hopefully you'll take into account what your advisory committees do say, that's why you have them. But while the spotlight's on Pierce Island, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I don't know how often you guys get out there, but I'm out there pretty much every day. And while we're talking about safety, there's no speeding signs on that road, all right? So, you want to enforce something, how do you enforce a speed limit if there's no sign? There's one sign for littering. Thanks to Everett Kern, who I call every time when the dumpsters need to be taken care of, and Silky, who we finally put lids on the garbage cans, the seagulls and the crows aren't taking the garbage out, but there's massive dumping out there. There's been car oil, I've seen sheet rock in the garbage cans, and, you know, there's just a lot more that needs to be done. This year, we didn't get a chance to get the brush hog out there. Where we put the paths, I mean, we're talking about the nature walks and everything, but without the brush hog going out every year, you can't, one, the police can't maintain the observations that they need to, and two, the bugs are really bad. Plus, once the growth gets too high, the brush hog is taking down a lot of sapling trees that shouldn't be taken down, but that's something else. And I just appreciate, you know, if you guys would take into account what your advisory committee say. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Our next speaker, also dealing with Pierce Island, is Bob Pollard.
Hi, my name is Bob Pollard, and I live on 294 Marcy Street. I feel, coming before you here tonight, after listening about this hotel, the dog issue seems rather minor. However, to many of us in the city, the dog is a very important issue. I'm here to encourage you to reverse your decision, and we have a strong belief in compromise. And that was brought up at the dog committee meeting and so forth. And I am sure that it will come forth with a plan that would be fine. But I would ask you tonight to reverse your decision so that we can put our dogs on the island and let them run into the water and so forth without feeling like we're criminals. I also want to tell you that I think this is the greatest lesson. My twelve-year-old grandson, who lives in Seattle but knows more about computers than I do, tells me that this is a civics course, that where government has acted quickly and so forth, and now the public is saying, "Hey, wait a minute, timeout, let's think about all this." And that's what's happened. And now I hope that you will follow through and listen to the public and reverse your decision, and so we can work out a plan that is acceptable to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, speaking on public art, is Jane James.
Good evening. I'd like to come before you to say thank you for your support of the public art ordinance, and hoping that you will support it again this evening for the third reading. Just a couple of comments, as many people support sports programs, baseball, bike races, other things like Market Square Day, Children's Day, public art supports the diversity that builds our community. In forwarding the mandates of the master plan, the cultural commission has researched this plan, as we all know, and we are continuing to keep our standards with working towards supporting the cultural plan and the master plan. Thank you for your support, and we look forward to a successful outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, dealing with the City Cultural Commission, is Peter Perciano.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members and staff. With only three minutes to comment on this subject, I've opted to only hit the main points and leave the rest for you to read in my record letter, which I'll distribute after. At the city council meeting of 21 August, the President of Art Speak made a comment, and I quote, "Clear up a couple of things that sometimes get a little muddy. Art Speak is the City of Portsmouth Cultural Commission. It is established from a mandate in the cultural plan and reemphasized with cause to action in the master plan." Let me muddy the water a little more by telling you who Art Speak is. They are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable corporation, registered with the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office, under the name City Cultural Commission. I take that to be Portsmouth. The name Art Speak is only registered as a trade name, not as a nonprofit charitable organization. Unlike other commissions in the city, the City Cultural Commission has no citywide elected or city council-appointed commissioners. They have a board of directors who are elected from within. The City Cultural Commission acts as an agent for the city under an agreement with the city, and at present, no agreement exists. In the 2005 agreement, the commission was required to provide an annual state-of-the-city cultural report. That was never done. I've said it once, and I say it again, this is a special interest, nonprofit charitable organization, that ninety percent of the Portsmouth residents don't have a clue as to what the city pays to keep it afloat. And I'll just, and this is what the city provides, Art Speak. They provide office space, telephone, computer, normal office supplies, materials, postage, and secretarial, legal, and technical services. They perform accounting and finance services of their assets and support the preparation of grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, speaking on 62 Deer Street, is Doug McDonald.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff. Tonight, I'm Doug McDonald, and I represent the owners of 62 Deer Street. Tonight you have before you a motion for rehearing. The motion for rehearing is not simply, in this case, a mechanism to set the petitioners up for appeal to Superior Court. This is a very important issue to the owners of 62 Deer Street. They've spent a lot of time and money converting this property into a single-family residence. They have a plan, and the plan includes a driveway, and the driveway meets the requirements for a driveway under the City of Portsmouth ordinance. The house, I don't know if you know, it's a big white house, it's across from the current Sheraton, it's a little further down Deer Street than Russell Street, it's after the intersection on the slower part of Deer Street, I think it's fifteen miles an hour there. What we've run up against is a concern voiced by the city about safety. We've received one verbal report from the city regarding this safety issue. I respect the source of the report, but the report was verbal, it has not been supported in writing. And I have received a report in writing that was done relative to the Sheraton project and Deer Street traffic flow, and in my estimation, that doesn't support a safety concern. I've also heard about crossing a sidewalk, driveway crossing a sidewalk. Well, the city ordinance recognizes that driveways cross the sidewalk, and all throughout the city, driveways cross sidewalks. So, I just want to mention to you, last time there was some concern about the speed with which, or the timing of the letters submitted, that was done because we were working with the city and trying to get this to move along quickly, to get it before the appropriate boards. I'm sorry if that appeared too quick and you didn't have time to consider it. And that was the reason that, just after that meeting, I submitted the motion for rehearing. You've had about a month with that motion to rehearing, so I hope that you've had time to go through it and understand the issues. And I just would appreciate your careful consideration regarding this really important issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, speaking on the public art ordinance, is Russ Grazer.
Good evening, mayor and councilors, my name's Russ Grazer, Jr., I reside at 504 Middle Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the public art ordinance this evening. And I thought I'd tell you a little story. Most of you know my parents, and they told me when I was getting ready to leave for college about fifteen, oh, twenty years ago now, that when they moved to Portsmouth in the 1960s, my mother actually wanted to live in another town about fifteen miles south of here, and she's embarrassed to admit that now, she's probably going to hate me for saying it, but they made the tough decision to decide to settle in Portsmouth. And then years later, when I was graduating from high school, she said that she was very glad that she had made the decision to stay in Portsmouth because she saw what had happened in this other community where she was thinking about living, and how the other community did not have the foresight that Portsmouth had for the zoning of the community, for the look of the houses in the community, for the architecture of the community, and the type of integrity that the town had, the foresight they had for the historic districts, for Strawberry Bank, for everything in the community. Today is a moment where you have the decision to make, or the ability to make a decision for future generations, and say, "Are we going to continue in this path of creating an environment for the city and for the future residents of the path of the city that enhances livability in the city?" A public art ordinance, are you going to create future public buildings that are going to stand above and beyond just the standard square box, you know, cement building that other communities might have? I hope you'll continue the tradition that Portsmouth has of paying careful attention to the architecture, paying careful attention to the beauty of the community, and creating a ordinance that allows future buildings to continue the wonderful cultural heritage that we have here. So, I think that's what the art ordinance really does, and I hope you'll support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight, also speaking on the public art ordinance, is Ellen Feinberg.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and city staff. I'm here once again to speak to you about the public art ordinance, and why it's important to pass that ordinance tonight, at its third and, I hope, final reading. I think, as I said the last time I stood up here, that the arts have a really important economic impact on our community. And Art Speak, the cultural commission here in Portsmouth, is working hard on a new economic impact study with a national organization. The previous one, as I cited earlier, talked about the impact of the arts and how many millions of dollars it brings to our community. The arts will continue to be an important force here, and I think it's important for our city to honor that in the way that we treat our public buildings and our public spaces. And I hope that tonight you'll take those thoughts into consideration when you're voting on the public art ordinance.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody who came this evening to comment as part of the meeting. We move on now to the first of two public hearings. This first one is an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.330, No Parking, Subsection A. A, dealing with Jenkins Avenue, northerly and southerly sides, westerly end between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Don't know if our City Manager wanted to make any comment on that. It's fairly straightforward.
Self-explanatory.
Okay. The rules of the road, pretty straightforward. There are up to three bites at the apple. You can speak for, against, simply about, and, but please try to make your comment and allow others the same courtesy. So with that, I'll open it up for a first time around on this public hearing issue. Sometimes you get a sense as to whether or not the line will form at the door. I had a sense. Second time around on this one, similar response. And third and final time around on this particular issue, no one can say we don't give you a shot at it. Seeing none, we'll close this first public hearing. The second one is an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.330, No Parking, Livermore Street, the easterly side from Pleasant Street to the dead end. Same idea, maybe a similar response, but maybe not. All right, we'll open it up the first time around. Please come on up if you give your name and address. That'd be great.
Sure. Greg Martin. I'm actually at 32 Livermore, so obviously a biased party here. But I think you've heard from some of the others that live on the street that we feel it's a great safety concern, and I think that's, you know, really number one, is we've thought about this a little bit more. From an ambulance, fire truck, any other safety vehicles, it'd be extremely hard to find your way down that street, especially in the summer, whether it be Prescott Park Play, children coming, you know, parents coming to go in the parks or whatnot. It's very tight on that street, sometimes much tighter than others. I think finding, again, the ambulance or fire truck down there, especially with an older house, it would go up in seconds. It's a concern from our standpoint. Other safety concerns, cars reversing or coming through at high speeds, a lot of times to park on the easterly side, cars will actually turn around on the Pleasant side and reverse backwards because it's hard to get into the driveways because it's so crowded. So they'll actually turn around Pleasant, back down, say, you know, upwards of 70 to 100 feet, all the way back down the street without, you know, any regard for anybody coming out of the house, children, et cetera. So I think that's number one. Second of all, inconvenience, you know, frankly, pulling in and out of the driveway, sometimes having the driveway blocked, not being able to come in. Thankfully, I have two driveways, one that's, I share with other condo members, one that's just ours, so I have a second alternative. Not everybody has that luxury there, so it's, can be a hassle. Or doing a 20 or 30-point turn, pulling out of the driveway because cars are so close, back and forth, back and forth, because you have about eight to 10 feet of leeway between the two cars. So I think that our request is just to have cars simply park on one side, not the other. Still allow some public parking, but it's just been a hassle and safety issue. Is that great? Any questions?
That'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else on this topic first time around? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. And if you give your name and address, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Polly Henkel. I live at 65 Wentworth Street. So we're just one street over from Livermore Street, and it's, I just wanted to talk, in general, parking's an issue in the South End. The street I live on has parking on one side only, and it still is tough when the emergency vehicles come through or the city garbage trucks. So I sympathize with the people on Livermore Street, and I think what they're asking for is, it's pretty reasonable. The town was built a long time ago before the automobile. It was never contemplated for automobiles. I just, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the second time around?
Your Honor, if I may, I just, while it's a public hearing, I was hand-delivered one from Robert Scagallati. It has photographs and a letter that if I can just take a moment just to read it for the public hearing portion and then pass it around.
Let's, is it, well, what I don't want to do, just so you understand, is I don't want to start a trend where people feel like they can write a letter in lieu of coming to the public hearing.
No, he was out of town, and that's why this was given to me.
Okay, what, let's go ahead without any objection. Go ahead, and then we'll submit it to the City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the second reading meeting concerning the referenced topic. However, attached find photographs, illustrations of the serious situation cars parked creating access and safety problems on Livermore. Specifically, the photographs show that cars due to being parked on both sides of streets, fire trucks were unable to drive the full length of Livermore and reach our home or our next door in the event of a fire. Additionally, photos will show our driveway being blocked by parked cars. Aside from the safety current concerns, there are occasions when the city refuse vehicle is not able to pick up our trash on designated days due to cars being parked on both sides. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Robert and Naki Scagallati.
Thank you very much. And anybody else on the second time around? Seeing none. Third and final time around on this subject. If there's anybody coming up, with that, we'll close the second public hearing as well. Appreciate you all coming up for that. We move on now to the approval of grants and donations. We have several items. The first one is an acceptance of donation to the New Library Building Fund from M. Kevin MacLeod and Kristen Sweet in the amount of $25,000 for the naming of the boardroom on the second floor in honor of their parents. And I believe Mary Ann List is here, and if you'd like to, oh, and Suzanne Foley, come on up, please, as part of this very significant and generous donation.
I am Mary Ann List. I'm the library director, and with me tonight is Suzanne Foley, who's the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the library. And we just wanted to come tonight to add our sincere appreciation of this very generous donation. We bring the appreciation of the Library Board of Trustees, the New Library Building Committee, and also the New Library Capital Campaign Committee. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So, do I have a motion on this issue? Yes, Counselor.
Your Honor, I move to approve and accept the donations to the New Library Building Fund as listed.
Second.
Questions, comments? I think we all echo the sentiments that were just expressed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Our second item, an acceptance of donation to the New Library Building Fund from a familiar, familiar name around here, Stalin Joanne Grasso, in the amount of $1,000. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the donation of $1,000.
Second.
Any comment on this, except to say, thank you an awful lot. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That also passes unanimously. The third item tonight is the acceptance of police department grants. We have a few. I'll mention them in unison. The New Hampshire Highway Safety Portsmouth Red Light Running Grant, in the amount of Another grant from New Hampshire Highway Safety for Portsmouth Regional DWI Saturation Patrols, a grant in the amount of $3,707.28. And the New Hampshire Highway Safety for Portsmouth Route 1 Corridor Enforcement Patrols Grant, in the amount of $2,757.
Your Honor, I move that we approve and accept these grants to the Portsmouth Police Department as listed.
Second.
Okay, discussion on these. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? This is none, nothing. Our next item is actually four items. Acceptance of Fire Department donations. They are Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, Inc., for $250. Joni Ann Esperian, in honor of son Ian Esperian, $500. Robert L. and Naki Scagallati, for $1,000. And Granite State Minerals, Inc., for $3,000.
Your Honor, I move to accept these Fire Department donations, and I believe these are for the memorial.
Monument, yes.
Monument.
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And thanks to all four there. Our next item is the acceptance of donation to the New Library Building Fund in memory of Ida Bellistock, in the amount of $686. And if I'm reading this correctly, the following names are all part of that total contribution. Ethylene Gullum, Lori Smith, and Robert Gullum. Shoyen W. and J. Hayward Davis. Sheldon L. and Renee F. Goodman. Mark Keller. Morris W. and Elaine R. Larkin. Florence L. and Peter Pastor. Renee Silverman. Helen K. Sweeney. Elizabeth A. Tober. And Marilyn and George Zaslaw. Zaslaw. Do I have a motion on this?
I move that we approve and accept these donations to the New Library Building Fund. Second.
Okay, yes, Counselor Whitehouse.
Question, I might have overlooked, but I didn't have a copy of the check. However, it was...
These are multiple checks, and we didn't put those in. It was just in honor of this one individual.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That also passes none, nothing. Appreciate everybody's generosity this evening. That's a lot of generosity we just went through. Our next part of the agenda this evening is consideration of resolutions and ordinances. The first item here is a first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-20835, uses in business districts. Press the City Manager, would you like to clarify this or expound on this?
Well, Your Honor, I do have a memorandum that articulates why we're proposing this. It's more of a legal issue that I would ask the city attorneys to speak to regarding a case that's now before the Supreme Court, and some clarification that we'd like to have in our ordinance.
The city is involved in litigation with Portsmouth Toyota, Mr. Boyle. Actually, we have more than one case with Mr. Boyle, but the case that has prompted this concerns the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And because there have been some perceived ambiguity in the way the ordinance reads with regard to how far back vehicles need to be parked from any residential or mixed residential district, what we have brought forward to you is an ordinance which would simply clarify what we understood to be the intent of the City Council all along, which was that motor vehicles needed to be kept out of that buffer zone. This is not intended to create any new policy or to change any law in the city, simply to clarify what we believe the Council has intended for years.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion on this item? Counselor. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Whitehouse, there are a few people that could answer that, aren't there?
Your Honor, this is an important issue, and I think the motion should be made correctly as stated in front of us. So, Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and hold a public hearing and second reading at the October 5th City Council meeting on a proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-20835, uses in business districts.
Second.
And I'm asking for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, let me see if there are any discussion or questions on this first. Seeing none, let's heed that request and do a roll call.
Assistant Mayor Frini?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Mayor Marchand?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, our second item this evening in this section, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.327, limited parking two hours on Islington Street, the northerly side from Tanner Street to Parker Street, the northerly side from Pearl Street to a point westerly 335 feet, and the northerly side from Cabot Street to a point easterly 515 feet.
Your Honor, these are, the next few of these are items that we believe are ordinances that we need to put in place to clarify some conditions that are existing, and that might have some ambiguity to them. I know that Counselor Smith, as the chairman of Traffic and Safety Committee, they've been working on this along with our traffic engineer, Debbie Finnegan, and she is here tonight, if anybody has any questions relative to this. But it's, a lot of it is housekeeping, and I don't know if Counselor Smith has anything to add on that.
No, just, again, it's housekeeping, just clarification of things in the ordinance, and I, again, just want to take an opportunity to, again, state the fine work that Deb has been doing and really going through our ordinances and clearing things up and finding, finding some holes that she's been able to clarify. Thanks for your hard work.
And, Your Honor, I think that it's important, as over time, we're going to see more of these come through. We'll see a couple, you know, as we go through to clean those up, so.
Very good. Like you said, this is the first of several this evening, so. Was, can I get a motion on that one? I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to pass first reading of amended ordinance as submitted and hold a public hearing and second reading at the October 5th City Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, further discussion, questions on this item?
Your Honor, for the public's information, October 5th is a Thursday evening. Just want everybody to be aware of that. The City Council did reschedule its meeting, so it is not typographical. It is correct. It's October 5th, Thursday evening.
Sort of like at the end of the football season where they start moving the games the other nights. It's kind of like that. Not a lot, but at any rate, unless there are other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item, similar in nature, but obviously different detail. First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.325, limited parking 30 minutes on Islington Street, northerly side from the corner of Brewster Street, easterly 110 feet, northerly side, easterly 70 feet from Dover Street to a point 82 feet westerly from Salem Street, and northerly side from Pearl Street to Parker Street.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass first reading as amending the ordinance and hold a public hearing and second reading at our October 5th meeting. Second.
Discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.330, No Parking, adding to the ordinance with appropriate deletions. Brewster Street, easterly side from Hanover Street southerly to Islington Street, Hanover Street, Hanover Street Extension, southerly side from Brewster Street, easterly 40 feet, Islington Street, northerly side from the corner of Congress Street and Maplewood Avenue, Middle Street, running westerly to the easterly corner of Tanner, there will be a quiz, Islington Street, northerly side, easterly from a point 145 feet, from Salem Street to a point 73 feet westerly of Cabot Street. Rock Street, deletion of easterly side from Islington Street to Hanover Street. This sounds like how I give directions. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a recommendation to pass first reading and hold a public hearing and second reading at our October 5th meeting. Second.
Discussion on this? Feel like we already had a lot of it. I don't know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.324, limited parking one hour subsection A, deletion of Islington Street, northerly side from the west side of Bridge Street, westerly for a distance of 131 feet, to the east side of Tanner Street.
Your Honor, I move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading on October 5th City Council meeting.
Second.
Discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Also passes nine, nothing.
Your Honor, before we leave this issue, these are, as you say, housekeeping, but are they in effect right now?
Yes, they are.
So the public won't be surprised when the public hearing comes and the changes, any changes are made, right?
No, they won't.
Okay.
And there have been discussions with the neighborhood groups.
Okay.
And the neighborhood group has actually come in and asked for these, some of these clarifications.
Okay, thank you, because these are a lot of changes, a lot of housekeeping issues. Okay.
How you clean house, you keep it clean.
That house is clean. Next item, second reading of, whoop, did I skip? No. Second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.330, No Parking Subsection A, Jenkins Avenue, northerly and southerly sides, westerly end between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass second reading as amended ordinance and hold a third and final reading at our October 5th Council meeting. Second.
Discussion on this, Counselor?
Yeah, just one question. Now, this is a shot street off Summit, and it's in the vicinity of the high school, which has caused some problems. Now, this is a narrow street. I approve it Monday through Friday, but I asked the city attorney, what about putting in, except holidays? Because visiting people from out of state or outside the city will be visiting, there'll be limited parking, and holidays certainly shouldn't affect the parking for the high school. And there are nine to, what, 12 holidays throughout the year, and that's what I'd like to see added.
Let me go to Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor, if I can answer that question. In discussions out there with the neighborhood, this area is very narrow coming down the street, so it's, it's an area they don't want cars on in the first place. street, so it's an area they don't want cars on in the first place. It really is, it is a hazard. There is an end area that has been parking, but what we're trying to do is to have no parking in there, really during the school hours, trying to get the students off of the neighborhood streets and into the school parking lots where they belong. This is what the neighbors have come up with, and this is on, again, it's only Monday through Friday and from 7:00 to 3:00. So if there's a holiday on a Monday and there's guests there, well, it would really come down to the police being called, one of the neighbors being called and saying, hey, you know, it would be a neighborhood-driven thing to have the police come down and have anybody come out there. But this is, this is pretty much exactly how the neighbors have requested and the traffic and safety felt to go forward with.
You know, it's just a thought, like I say, that parking is very tied up there, visiting people from out of town, and we could insert except holidays at the end of this ordinance. You know, Jenkins Avenue and Oddly and southerly side, westerly end between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, except holidays.
I don't think that would be a good idea because we don't want cars on that street, period.
Well, let me...
It is a safety issue.
Let me ask this...
If you want to do it in that, in that westerly end where we're putting the hours, I'm okay to that, but I think we're really starting to split hairs on it.
Well, let me ask this, Counselor Whitehouse, if you're interested in, do you want to propose an amendment?
Well, I'd like to try, yes. I'd like to try an amendment and add to the, in, except holidays, the word except. Would that change the ordinance, so you'd have to rewrite the ordinance?
You'd have to define holidays.
We have another hearing.
Right, it would. Well, first off, the way you propose it, it would change the entire ordinance because except holidays would apply to the whole street.
Well, northerly and southerly side, yeah.
That's a good point, actually. Is there a second for it? If you're making, well, I guess we're still trying to define it.
I'm going to withdraw, I withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? This is nine, nothing. Next item is a second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.330, no parking on Livermore Street, easterly side from Pleasant to the dead end.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to pass second reading of amended ordinance as submitted and hold a third and final reading on October 5th City Council meeting.
Okay, her second, any questions, comments on this? Counselor Whitehouse.
Yeah, here again, Your Honor, on the old maps, it shows that street going all the way to the wall. Now, I know back there three years ago, there was some question about, does that street act as a paper street, or does it stop where the concrete bollets were installed by Public Works?
Let's go to our city attorney.
Counselor Whitehouse is absolutely correct. This was a hot topic a few years back, and the city concluded and defended the position that the city's interest in Livermore Street runs to the water. However, as a purely practical matter, it is impossible now to park beyond the dead-ended portion of the street. So even though the city owns beyond that dead-ended portion, the ordinance as currently written, I think, will solve the problem which has been identified because there's no physical possibility of parking beyond the barriers.
Because there's been concrete bollets put in, and it's been brashed over. All right.
Okay.
Just to add, if anyone does have an opportunity to take a look at those photographs, some of those photographs really does spell out the issues that are out there with the cars blocking, literally blocking people's driveways.
All right. Other questions or comments, reflection, otherwise? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Whoop.
Your Honor, if I may, I would like to motion to suspend the rules and break, with the purpose, while I'd like to vote to suspend the rules and make a motion to do that, and in the event that it passes, it would be to bring forward item Roman numeral 11E, letter from Phil Pettis and Jameson French of the Market Square Steeple Fund, and address that issue given that they are present.
Okay, do I get a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we bring this forward and allow the matter to be addressed at this time.
Very good. The item, just to reiterate, is a letter from Phil Pettis and Jameson French, Market Square Steeple Fund, requesting use of UDAG funds for North Church steeple improvements.
Your Honor, as you've indicated, in your agenda under Section 11 is a letter from Mr. Pettis and Mr. French regarding the Market Square Steeple Fund. And as you can see from their correspondence, the community has pledged approximately $600,000 towards the steeple restoration project, which is 60% of their $1 million goal. And as you may be aware, the city owns the clock and the tower and is widely held view that the steeple and clock tower are unmistakably city landmarks and part of what some consider a critical part of the city's commitment to historic preservation in the community. In their attached letter, it is suggested the city make a monetary contribution to the Market Square Steeple Fund, which could be matched by other donations. The suggested grant would be $100,000, but the challenge to the community to contribute an additional $200,000 is matched to the city's participation. It would be my recommendation to fund this challenge grant concept through the Urban Development Action Grant, or as we commonly refer to, UDAG, funds, which are non-local tax dollars and which are typically used for economic development and community enhancement projects. In discussing this matter with the mayor, he concurs with this recommendation, it should be noted, there is currently $3,549,000 in the UDAG fund. The city's legal staff has been consulted on this proposal and has found it is allowable use of UDAG funds. I've also reviewed the criteria for the UDAG expenditures on the city's UDAG expenditure policy and find that the proposal meets the following criteria: project preserves local historic character, project enhances downtown business community in a tangible manner. I might add, Your Honor, that the UDAG monies have been utilized by the Economic Development Commission in the past to do these types of projects, and no doubt in our mind, from a staff level, the steeple has been an integral part of the downtown landscape, and we feel from a staff perspective, this would be an appropriate use of funds. In addition, they are non-local tax dollars, and it would be our recommendation to proceed with this request.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Yes, Assistant Mayor?
I will move that we approve and authorize the city manager to implement a North Church steeple restoration challenge grant program of providing $1 of UDAG fund match for every two private dollars donated, up to a total of $100,000 in UDAG funds.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments on this item? Counselor Whitehouse and then Counselor Dwyer.
I certainly support this move. I was hoping it had come before us, long before now, but it's good timing. Anyway, all I'm asking is that the EDC be notified of this issue. I don't think it was on the agenda at the last EDC meeting, so...
No.
Okay.
Very good, that is noted. Counselor Dwyer?
That was one of the things I was going to raise as well, and just a couple of questions about it. I'm certainly in favor of it as well. I think it would be helpful for the city manager to identify, are we, are the UDAG monies essentially, do we spend essentially interest that we earn on a pool of UDAG monies, or are they renewed every year? That would be one question.
The, first, let me just go back and for the public's information, the Urban Development Action Grants are grants that were provided a number of years ago through a direct grant from Washington, D.C. to various projects, one of which was the Sheridan Project, and there were probably three other projects within the city. The only one that ever paid back the entire amount was the Sheridan, and that's where the balance of $3.5 million comes from. The policy has historically been to utilize the interest earned to spend for those projects and fund the Economic Development Commission's specialized projects for studies or maybe some small improvements to help downtown streetscapes or signage. The council does have the right, because the council is the one that made the policy, it is not an ordinance or a charter provision, that they may take money from that over and above what the policy has stated. There is provisions, and as I indicated in my comments, there are, these fit into those provisions. It will still leave approximately $3.5 million of UDAG in the corpus of the, of our trust that we have.
And then, two other things. I assume that this would be a match for new dollars going forward and not match...
That would be my, and I would ask, probably, I see they're saying yes, so I suspect that that is a yes. The other thing I'd like to mention while we're talking, the face of the clock needs some repair as well. We're also doing, aside from this, funds that are being proposed, we are doing the mechanical improvements to the clock. Public Works Department, Steve Parkinson, has engaged a individual to do those improvements to the clock, but also the face of the clock, the exterior needs to be replaced, and that is probably a $25,000 cost. So, again, that would, hopefully, some of these monies would be able to be utilized for that as well.
In addition to the $100,000?
No, within the...
Within the $100,000.
Within the $100,000, as part of the rationale to utilize the $100,000.
Very good, good questions. Just one coming.
One coming, you know, I'm glad to see that our city manager and the EDC is mentioning the beautiful view of the clock tower and the steeple of the North Church, something I've said many, many times. Thank you.
Very good. Settle like an anvil. There we go. Any, okay, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And that passes nine, nothing.
And, Your Honor, I might, while Mr. French and Mr. Pettis are here, along with Reverend Shippey, probably need to get together at some point to work out some of the details on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your good work. With that, we move back to where we were prior in the agenda, which I believe was in Roman numeral nine, letter H, the third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1 by the creation of Article 17, the funding of public art. Do I have a motion on this? Yes, Counselor.
Very apropos, following our, probably our major piece of public art in the square, I'd like to recommend the council pass third reading of the public art ordinance, and then, along with the materials that are in our packet, authorize the creation of a public art trust fund to implement the provisions of the ordinance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Counselor?
Staying consistent, Your Honor, I'll be voting no.
I'd like a roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. We'll go with that, no.
Okay. Assistant Mayor Frini?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
No.
Counselor Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Penelakis?
No.
Counselor Whitehouse?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Mayor Marchand?
Yes.
Six to three passes.
Okay, we move on now to the consent agenda, shorter than usual, but just as pithy. After reading this, a motion would be in order to accept it as a whole, unless there are any items that anybody would like to see pulled out. Seeing none, nothing of that sort. The first is a group that are acceptance of donations to the New Library Building Fund, Rachel L. Hopkins, $50, Francis Allen, $100, Bottom Line Technologies, $500, Greenwood Henman Publishing Group, $500, Highliner Foods, $500. The second group are acceptance of donations to the Cemetery Committee, anonymous for $30, anonymous for $112.26, St. Andrews Lodge Number 56 for $200, and the New Hampshire Humanities Council, $200. And the final item is a letter from Peter Bressiano, Seacoast Adult Baseball League, thanking the City of Portsmouth and various municipal departments for their outstanding support over the summer months. Do I have a motion for those three items?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? We move on now to presentation, consideration of written communications and petitions. First item, letter from Attorney Douglas McDonald, Keenan McDonald, regarding driveway permit application for 62 Deer Street, motion for rehearing of the City Council's August 7, 2006 decision.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to deny the motion for rehearing for a driveway at 62 Deer Street to place the motion for rehearing on file.
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Your Honor, I have one question.
Oh.
This memo...
Your Honor, a quid of voter, I believe we have voted.
I'm sorry, you move so fast.
You're fast.
I'm a little slow, you know that.
We did vote. The...
All I'm asking is the city attorney's opinion. This memo was given to us by the Assistant City Attorney. Does he concur with the memo? That's all I'm saying.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a letter, and by the way, that passed, I believe, unanimously.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Letter from Attorney John Ryan Cessasa and Ryan regarding Dover Realty Trust Harbor Corp rezoning, motion for reconsideration and rehearing pursuant to RSA Chapter 677-2.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I make the motion to deny this and place the letter on file.
Second.
Discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is a letter from Attorney Thomas Keenan McDonald regarding 976 Realty Trust, 1,000 Market Street Corporation trustee versus City of Portsmouth, motion for reconsideration of rehearing regarding Harbor Corp rezoning pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 677-2.
Your Honor, I remove, I make the motion to deny this and place the letter on file.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? That also passes nine, nothing. Next item is a letter from Xana Morris, the Music Hall, requesting for parking meter bags for the Music Hall's 2006, 2007 season. Do I have a motion on this one?
I'll move to approve the aforementioned request from the Music Hall for the placement of parking meter bags.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Also passes nine, nothing. Final item in this section of the agenda, a letter from Tim Veu, the Stone Pigeon, requesting permission to use the space in front of Breaking New Grounds in Market Square for a poetry reading event and the use of a small-scale sound amplification system on October 9, 2006, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Counselor Whitehouse.
He does refer to a, to a small sound amplification system. So I hope the city manager, in his reply, our communication to him, he emphasizes...
My apologies, Counselor, I should have moved that to the city manager with power and given the concern that Counselor Whitehouse might think that's a more appropriate motion. If that's acceptable, the second.
Very good, seeing no objection to that. Any other questions or comments on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Great French name there, by the way. That's the French name of the night. Now we move on to the city manager's portion of the agenda, I believe he has one item.
Thank you, Your Honor. The item that I do have for action is a request to bring back as part of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year '07 through fiscal year '12, Public Works Department's four projects that require bonding. And I did provide within the comments, the citywide capital facilities, capital improvements, $1 million, and I did identify the page and attach the pages from the capital plan. For those in the audience, that would be page 84. The item number two is city sidewalk construction program, and that's $500,000. And it's a program that we fund on a two-year schedule, rotating schedule, and that's on page 106 of the capital plan. And the Congress Street area improvements, this project will fund the replacement of existing concrete sidewalks with brick, installation of period lighting, resetting of granite curb, and the installation of landscaping, trees where appropriate. These improvements will be on Congress Street from Market Square to the intersection with Maplewood Avenue, and this is page 129 of the capital improvement plan. And then our street paving management and rehabilitation for $2.5 million. Again, we do this every two years, and the pavement management system priority ranks the streets for best dollar investment and is coordinated with other utility work. And attached for your information is a copy of the project page, along with a listing of the streets, and also this can be found on page 135 of the capital improvement plan. So, Your Honor, if I get approval, I'll bring this back for first reading for this bond resolution in the amount of $4,450,000.
So to reiterate, this is not actually a first reading, this is simply a request to bring it back for a first reading. Do I have a motion on this one?
Your Honor, I authorize the city, the City Council should authorize the city manager to bring back the first reading on a bond resolution in the amount of $4,450,000 for the October 5th Council meeting.
Second. Second.
Okay, discussion on this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Your honor, I do have an informational item that I'd like to bring out for the public's benefit, and that is the update on revaluation. You have a memorandum in your packet, and maybe if I might, I'll read from that so that people at home know where we stand on the revaluation process. As required by state law, each municipality shall assess all properties every five years. You may recall, in two thousand and two, the city completed its last full revaluation, and at that time, the city was planning on implementing annual evaluations of all properties. However, in June of two thousand and four, House Bill four twenty-six was passed, which limited the ability of municipalities to revalue assessments annually. Therefore, in two thousand and four, assessments were adjusted to maintain proportionality between residential and commercial properties. Residential properties were last updated on April first, two thousand and three, and commercial properties were updated on April first, two thousand and four to maintain this proportionality. No adjustments were necessary for two thousand and five. In accordance with state law, tax year two thousand and six is the year for the city of Portsmouth to complete its full revaluation. The assessor's office is scheduled to release final property values for the two thousand and six revaluation on September twenty-second. These assessments reflect fair market values of properties as of April first, two thousand and six. As in the past, there will be a special insert in the Portsmouth Herald, and this was requested by the city council, Portsmouth Herald, listing all property assessments by address. There will also be additional publications available at the library and throughout City Hall. In addition, this to the publication, the Portsmouth Herald, in the Portsmouth Herald, all assessments will be available on the city's website. For everybody's information, on the average, residential assessments have increased between ten and fifteen percents with a median, eleven-point-seven-nine percent. These assessments represent approximately ninety percent of market value as of April first, two thousand and six. In addition, the assessor's office is carefully monitoring listings of properties going up for sale. These assessments, as of April first, two thousand and six, are currently at eighty-four percent of asking price, prices. Commercial assessments have increased on the average by twenty percent with a median of nineteen-point-six-four percent increase over previous assessments. These assessments represent approximately ninety-two percent of market value as of April first, two thousand and six. A large portion of this increase has come from property values in the downtown area. Over the past few years, a number of sales in the downtown area has substantiated such increases in assessed values. For instance, the sale of Eagle Photo at one-point-seven million dollars, PV's Hardware at two million dollars, and recently, the Portsmouth Herald building at three-point-two million dollars. These sales, in addition to the rapid expansion of commercial development downtown, justify the increase in these assessments. Once the assessments have been published, the assessor's office will be available to answer property owners' questions and concerns. Upon request, the property owner will receive a copy of the property record card, which shows the new assessment as well as pertinent information concerning their assessment. Property record cards are available at the assessor's office. If a property owner wishes to contest their assessment, an abatement application needs to be filed with the assessor's office no later than March first, two thousand and seven. That's March first, two thousand and seven. The assessing department has until July first, two thousand and seven, to issue a response to the abatement request. At that time, the property owner may file an appeal to the New Hampshire Board of Tax and Land Appeals or to the Rockingham County Superior Court by September first, two thousand and seven. Tax bills for two thousand and six will be mailed at the end of October and are due in December two thousand, December first, two thousand and six, for the first half of the total annual taxes, and June first, two thousand and seven, for the second half of taxes due. On June nineteenth, two thousand and six, the city council adopted the annual general fund appropriation for FY oh seven. At that time, an estimated tax rate of eighteen dollars and thirty cents was established using the city's current assessed value adjusted for new construction. With the revaluation completed, the adjusted estimated tax rate is now fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents. However, keep in mind that this rate could change once final shared revenues and county appropriations are finalized and provided by the state. The final tax rate must be approved by the Department of Revenue Administration and will take place before the end of October. What we will do is have a tax calculator on the website for those people, when they get their assessment, their new assessment, there will be a tax calculator, so show people how to estimate their taxes at the fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents. So the tax rate of eighteen dollars and thirty cents that was approved by the city council comes down to fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents, and this is, comes down proportionally as it relates to the new assessed values. So that's important for people to recognize. So at this point, people will be able to determine how their taxes will affect them, and they'll be able to have that information well in advance of the bills going out.
Very good. On that item, I know you have, I don't know if there's anything else you want to mention, but any comments, questions on that? There will be, I'm sure, more to follow, but it's a pretty comprehensive update.
And I expect that the supplement will be out this Thursday, or thereabouts.
Okay. Any other items?
Oh, I'm sorry, your honor. No, there are no other items, just, I do have a report back, which is on bicycle-friendly communities, and Counselor Reynolds and I have met, and I'm going to continue to work with the staff, and we're looking at the items that he has brought to my attention. And I've talked to the traffic engineer about that as well.
And I know we'll be, I think there'll be more discussions upcoming on that.
Thank you, Ms. Manager.
The only other thing, I think, your honor, is maybe just a comment on the September twenty-fifth work session. At your request, we are looking to start the work session at five-thirty rather than six-thirty. The five-thirty work session would really be to have a site walk for the proposed river walk before the weather turns on us and there's still a little bit of light. The mayor thought it would be good to have a site visit to that location. I know that Counselor Grasso mentioned me earlier, that she thought it probably important to maybe carpool down. I'll be up at the city hall parking lot at five-fifteen if anybody wants to ride down with me. And then we come back after an hour and start our six-thirty work session, which will be on the water rate ordinance. So I'll be here, and anybody else, I'll probably have Cindy or somebody else here that can, you know, take two cars down and we can park, and so that we can carpool down.
Thank you, John, because I was thinking, when we get through our meeting, we will want to have our cars here, not down.
Right. So what I'll do is, I'll be here, and I'll have another staff person here, and those of you that obviously have to come from work of other places, that might be type of time, I think maybe just park in that area and just meeting us down there. But I will be here at five-fifteen in the city hall parking lot.
Very good. Thank you for all that. Counselor Whitehouse?
Yeah, one question, the city manager.
Sure.
John, on the water rates, the bills that just went out last week, do they reflect the increase already?
That's a good question. Let me think about that. I don't know. I'll have to check. Because they go, they go out three times a year, and I just want to make sure I'm giving you proper information, but I'm not sure. I'll check.
Okay. Either way, they got a leak, or something's happened.
Well, they didn't go up that much. But water rate that just went out for this, this billing period? Yeah, all right. I'll get back to you.
Okay, any other questions for our city manager? All right. The next portion of the agenda, that's mine, I have nothing except for, just as a, more a reiteration, both for the council as well as those at home. It's been several weeks since we met, and in that time, the state Supreme Court has opined on the current state of education funding. And there was some understandable concern, because it's another chapter in that fifteen or thirty-three-year saga. The most important message to get across for those who might be watching at home that are following this to some extent, is that for the current fiscal year that we're in, that is FY oh seven, there is no impact to cities and towns, including Portsmouth, there will not be an effect in FY oh seven on people's, on the city's expected contributions or receipts as it regards to education funding. And I know that was one of the concerns, is a potential court decision might create a decision that would be retroactive to the year that we would be in at the time of the decision. It's going to be challenging nonetheless. There's no promises for FY oh eight, but for FY oh seven, that is very much the case. And so, we're certainly, along with the coalition communities, that takes a lot of time right now in trying to understand where the political winds are blowing, what it likely means, and I'm not sure we know exactly yet, because it's a fresh decision. But it will certainly have a meaningful impact in FY oh eight and beyond, but it will have no direct impact in the current fiscal year in which we're in, in which we reside now, FY oh seven. So that's the only remark I wanted to make there. And at this point, we'll move on to Counselor Pinalakis regarding the dogs on Pierce Island discussion that came up earlier this evening.
Thank you. Your honor, I would like to propose a motion to direct the city manager to return Pierce Island to an off-leash area and establish a temporary committee to work with the city staff to develop recommendations for signage on Pierce Island.
Second.
And I, we held a meeting, and it was, the dog committee held a meeting, and it was a very productive meeting, and a lot of ideas came out of that. We did not try to implement any of those ideas. We wanted to have a separate committee and be sure that everything that we were putting in, such as, for example, to the hours be from eight in the morning until five at night, that they had to be on leash, like from Memorial Day to September, when there's people on the island at the pool or over there walking and whatnot. In the winter months, we don't have to look at anything like that, because there's usually just the dogs and walkers on the island. So I just would like to see us rescind that motion and let this temporary committee set up these rules and regulations, however we want to call them in the future, and have them, probably will have them done by December. But the, they, the people were very cooperative. They had many good ideas on what to do. They all felt that the island should be used for both the dogs and people. And we have no records, no data that says that anybody's been bit there, and the only time that we've had a problem is that a jogger attacked a dog owner. And so, we can't really say that there's been anybody bitten over there or harassed or anything else, because no one calls the police or anything, and it's just one person's word against the other. So I would like to see us take off the temporary order that we put on and let this committee go forth and get the things done.
Okay, so do I have a second on the motion that you proposed?
But is-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a second.
Okay. Other questions, comments on this? Counselor Whitehouse?
Speaking on the motion, yes. The motion is to rescind the previous motion that was made August seventh. Right?
It's a direct city manager to return.
It was a motion.
It was an action.
Yeah. Let's have the city attorney-
Show a motion.
Okay. All right.
When this came before the city council the first time, it arose rather late at night as a result of a verbal report with no prior written materials. For that reason, the council's action was frankly disjointed. The reality of this situation is that although the council passed the motion that night, under the city's existing dog ordinance, the authority to place these signs or remove these signs lies with the city administration, not with the city council. However, because the city manager is sensitive to expressions of the council's intent, he acted to exercise his authority based upon the decision made by the city council. He was not truly directed to do it. He chose to do it based upon his understanding of what the council wanted done following that disjointed discussion. For that reason, even though the normal rule is that to rescind a prior action of the council requires one of several motions, all of which call for two-thirds vote, because this action of the council was merely an expression of intent and the actual posting of the signs on the island was the city manager exercising his authority, the motion as made by Counselor Pinalakis tonight would be appropriate, and if the council should vote on it, it would simply be another expression of the council's intent.
Let me go with Counselor Hines, and then we'll work down here. Okay, Counselor Hines?
I had the impression that when we voted that evening, that we were voting under a suspension of the rules, in which case Roberts Rules of Orders would not apply, and most of the council rules were based on Roberts Rules of Order. So the whole issue was based on a suspension of the rules and action by the council, which I think was appropriate.
Just for clarification, I, and my recollection may not be accurate on that, I'm not sure that the rules were actually suspended for that. I mean, your point is-
Well taken, but- That's actually not my recollection. I don't recall suspending the rules. It was on the agenda, on to Counselor Whitehouse, it was appropriate for some kind of vote to take place. But in any event, for the reason that I just gave, it's actually a rather academic point.
That's right. Basically, we made a recommend, we-
If Counselor Pinalakis's motion should pass, then the city manager will actually be free to do as he sees fit with that action.
In effect, we simply expressed our will the first time, and we are expressing our will a second time.
Exactly.
That's really what it boils down to. Let me go back up this way. Let me start with Counselor Dwyer, and then Counselor Grasso.
Well, maybe this is where Counselor Whitehouse is going, but lest we, again, be accused of being disjointed, I, as I look at this, the memo, and what I heard Counselor Pinalakis suggesting was not, not only to rescind, but some other items that go along with rescinding. And I personally would have a hard time only voting on rescinding without discussion and voting on the other items that you mentioned. So I need clarity on what we, what we just think we put on the table.
Let's do that.
That was going to be my question.
Okay. Really, all my motion was to rescind the-
Previous action.
Our action. The other part of it was what was suggested by the dog committee, the Pierce Island committee, and the dog owners group, that we get together a small ad hoc committee and set down some rules and regulations on how, what times the dogs need to be on the leashes in the summertime, where they can run openly and with signage, and to just kind of pinpoint these things that created this problem to begin with. That's all. These were just examples I was using, like, say, from eight in the morning until five at night, when the pool is open, and from, say, June fifteenth until Labor Day. They're just examples. Nothing has been set in stone or nothing, they were just things that were asked, that we look at.
Let me ask the city attorney, the, because we're dealing with two separate things, and I think this, actually, none of this is highly provocative, really, in the big picture. The, is, the question of, after the recommendation, the will of the council being expressed to undo what we had expressed several weeks ago, the second piece of it, which Counselor Pinalakis just mentioned, that is, to get folks together to discuss what a recommendation would be, that at some point in the next, it sounds like in the near future, would be a recommendation back to the council, probably would be officially from the dog committee, though there would be non-dog committee folks involved in that discussion. What would be the most appropriate course of action for that? What's the level of formality needed?
I believe that with the explanation which she has provided, simple passage of the motion, the way that Counselor Pinalakis has written it, would accomplish that result.
Okay. Let me go now with Counselor Grasso.
Yes. If we vote to retract our, rescind our action, is this going to lead, lead the way for an ordinance to be coming in? Because I think that's the only way we're going to be able to regulate anything.
It could be a first step in that direction. Would depend upon-
I'd like to ask the council if you think that's the way the committee would be going.
At this point, we had not decided on any ordinance. We were doing it to, just for this certain period of time in written rules and regulations that have referred to Pierce Island. That's the only place it would refer to, is Pierce Island. Because now people are under the impression that dogs can run all over Pierce Island off the leash. That's not so. It's on the, on the, I don't know, westly end.
Easterly end.
That they can run off the leash. These are just clarifications of what the ordinance is and what these would occur, so that they do not, the dog owners, walking their dogs and still go over there at a certain period at night and let them run free. But during the day, there would, would, when there was people on the island with kids and whatnot, they would have to be on the leash. For example, from eight in the morning until five at night. But I didn't know if an ordinance-
I was going to say, I think that's a wonderful idea, but if it's just, you know, an idea, and it's, and again, with the impression that people have of where the dogs can run on Pierce Island, if that were in a form of an ordinance, I think that maybe that's the way to go. I don't mean all of the city, just for Pierce Island.
Yeah, it is in the form of an ordinance now, but what we need is the signage to go up to say, this is where, on this end of the island where the dog, down on this end has to be on leash.
Let me, I'm going to step in here, because this is what we didn't, in my opinion, did not really do as well as we could have back several weeks ago. That's why I voted against it then, and I think that, I want to cut it off right now, is, all we're, I think, the practical effect of all we're seeking to do tonight, all I'm hearing, is basically undo what was done several weeks ago, and then basically go through a process, which will, should not, and will not take very long, to get it where it should go, and where ordinarily, in similar situations, dog or non-dog related would go, and that is a recommendation, which the recommendation may say, you know what, we need an ordinance, or it may say, we need a rule change. I mean, that's why you kind of hash it out, and then you come back with something that we then- we then can tackle, that we can turn into something.
To make that point then really clear, wouldn't we need to amend the motion so that it is clear that we are putting in motion a process, that we're not simply rescinding, that we are rescinding and then putting in motion a process to come back with some recommendations to address the issues that have been raised?
But we did not, this council did not have the right to really do anything. We could say that we wanted the city manager to do this. But if he chose not to do it, it could have gone that way. So, we're just kind of, I think right now, we're muddying the waters. If we just can't go ahead and let this motion pass, get the dogs back running off their leash, and let the Dog Committee and the Pierce Island Committee and the Dog Owners get together and find what I would call rules and regulations for Pierce Island. That's what the intent of it is. It would not affect any other part of the city.
Assistant Mayor?
At the risk of adding further to our parliamentary brilliance, I would just point out that I think Councilor Dwyer's and Councilor Grasso's concerns are well founded. That being said, like any other committee that we have, we do not always necessarily charge the Economic Development Commission or other commission with something to do in a circumstance such as this. I suspect we all agree and accept Councilor Panalakis's offering that this will be given the utmost scrutiny in the shortest period of time, and it doesn't need to be part of a motion. And I go back to Attorney Sullivan's comments, and I'm comfortable with the bona fides of Councilor Panalakis, but I think we have effectively, informally, set something in motion. And I don't think we need to do a charge. I don't personally.
Councilor?
I accept that, but let me raise one other question that is part of this whole package then. It's hard for me to understand why when we have a Dog Committee and a Pierce Island Committee, we would set up yet another committee for this issue?
It would be members of each one of these committees, so we can talk about it, representing each, someone from each one being a representative. And as soon as they get, as soon as this comes back to the council, that committee's fine.
It just folks with common interest in this discussion because they have, just getting together, very short term, coming up with a recommendation that would come back to us, and then the ball would be in our court as to how to best address it, just like it would have been a month ago. It's the same thing. It's nothing provocative here. Councilor Whitehouse?
Yeah, I'm glad the maker of the motion has used the word rescinding, because I'm looking at the minutes, and there was a motion made August 7th stating that a certain councilor moved that affected immediately. Now, when they moved, that means a motion was made. So, I'm satisfied that she used the word rescinding in her motion.
Let's keep in mind, this motion is, really, it's gentility, it's politeness, for the same reason it was before. This is much ado about not a whole lot at this point. It is, this is simply to politely ask the city manager, just as we unwittingly politely asked him before, to do something, we're asking to politely undo it and to understand the will. That is it. That is really it. It's pretty simple.
Can we move the question?
Can we move the question, please? All those in favor of Councilor Panalakis's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Who started this anyway?
A six-week motion.
You did.
Oh, no, I couldn't have.
Not me.
We don't have an ordinance at all.
And we can come back, we can, now we can work on that.
It's not going to work.
Okay, Councilor Smith? Lucky you, you get to go next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to make a motion to have the Planning Board begin the process of either to look at the old library building, to look at either its disposal or reuse, as would be their charge under the city charter. And if I can get a second to that, I'll speak to it.
Second.
Thank you. My intent of this is to allow what by city charter has to take place, which is the Planning Board has to go through the process of either retaining or disposing of a city building. At the same time, we have started, and Councilor Dwyer and myself work on a, the reuse committee, which is also basically doing the same thing. So, these two committees are running in parallel. My reasoning for trying to have them run in parallel is really a timing issue. But if we just allow the reuse committee to do their work, we would be getting a report January, February timeframe, hopefully sooner. This committee's doing incredible work very quickly. We have a very capable chairperson. She's doing a great job. But then, we would get that January, February, and then pass it down to the Planning Board, which then would go through their process of a couple of months before we'd get a report back. Now, we're starting to hit, you know, May, June timeframe. And I, for one, am not comfortable with having a building sitting empty for that long period of time. So, again, my intent is to allow both committees to really look at the issue. We're going to have a lot of people looking at all sides of the old library building when it does come vacant, so that we can really grasp and make a decision, a well-informed decision, that we get reports from both committees.
Okay, there was a second. Councilor Reynolds?
Just to clarify, I hope, I hope this will help, because I did speak with Councilor Smith about this in advance. As he explained, we have the Building Reuse Committee, which is currently working to look at all the cities' currently owned buildings, most of which are being used for other, for some purpose, many of them on, you know, dollar-a-year leases to civic groups, et cetera, right? We have only a few city buildings that are currently unoccupied, most famously the Lafayette School. And so, as I understand it, the charge and the work of that Building Reuse Committee is looking at all buildings and trying to come up with policies and recommendations that would apply to each building and sort of principles that we'd apply to future situations where buildings are, you know, when the leases come up or when buildings become vacant. The old, the current library building, of course, is a very prominent building, which we know will be vacant in a few months, and Councilor Smith is trying to avoid the situation where that lies vacant for months and months into 2007. So, he's not trying to, not doing anything which is intended to usurp or bypass the current work of the overall Building Reuse Committee, which, of course, he's on, he wouldn't do that, but he's just trying to have something get started in parallel so that time isn't lost, and the old library building is dealt with as quickly as possible.
It's simply a statement that this is a high priority, a high-profile building that we know will be becoming vacant at a fairly certain date, and this is a wise attempt to facilitate whatever decision is made to be done quickly, but well, or as quickly as it can be. Councilor Panalakis?
Yes, I'd like to agree with Councilor Smith. I think that this should go along with the Planning Board, and after looking at Lafayette School, I do not want that building to sit empty, one way or the other, any longer than it has to. And I think that he's got a very good idea to have the Planning Board start.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Aye. I'll support Councilor Smith's recommendation or motion, but I am looking at a communication that was given to the Building Reuse Committee and the charge that was given to them. And I think it's going to be kind of duplicating of their duties, you know? The first thing was to define the objections and criteria for evaluating city-owned properties. And then it gives three or four or five other developments they have to follow. So, I hope it's not a duplication of duties. I hope they work hand in hand with public courts.
And there's certainly challenges because you're trying to move the ball along. It's really, in some ways, almost a parallel track, so, but this is a very capable group, and I understand your concern, Councilor Whitehouse, legitimate. But I'm very impressed so far, both among the councilors involved as well as members of the public. It's a pretty time-intensive early on, and so they're trying to get a lot done in a short amount of time so as to address concerns like yours. Let me whip around here.
Well, let me just, maybe, maybe I'll ask a clarification, actually ask Councilor Smith to answer it that might follow on Councilor Whitehouse's question, because I think I had the same question. That the committee is, the committee's charge might be read as a slightly more general view of the kinds of criteria that the city would use to determine disposal or reuse of buildings or favorable terms for use of buildings, whereas the Planning Board would be looking at some very specific criteria that they would apply in other settings. So, I think, I see that's how the two are complementary, that this committee would not do exactly the same kind of site review discussion that the Planning Board would do, but that it's setting, or perhaps reaffirming, some larger criteria that the Planning Board has used in the past. Is that a way to...
Let me go, Councilor Smith, yeah?
Yeah, and it is absolutely intended to, there will be parallel, there will be redundancies. But we have to remember that the reuse committee is looking at all buildings and properties, whereas I'm asking the Planning Board to look at one. And it really, by city charter, is their job to do that. And the Blue Ribbon Committee is only an advisory ad hoc committee just to give recommendation. So, regardless of what the Blue Ribbon Committee comes up with on this particular building, it will still have to go to the Planning Board. So, it's my intent to try, to really try to run this parallel, so the Planning Board can then look at either reuse or disposal of. I'm not trying to ask them to do one or the other, but just to look at it at this time and have their recommendation come back. And we should receive both reports at about the same time, so that we're not having this building sit empty, we're paying heat, and we have a vacant building unlike, you know, the situation we have at the Lafayette School.
Assistant Mayor?
I could not agree more with Councilor Smith, and I think that, to the extent there's overlap, that's good. It just means it'll happen faster. Indeed, there is no reason why people on the reuse committee can't appear and speak at Planning Board meetings. It's perfectly appropriate, and that just brings the ball forward. We don't need to worry about compartmentalizing it and not get it done all in one shot. And I might add, there are many committees that we have that are advisory in nature that don't preclude the city council from doing something from a policy perspective that's more time-sensitive, and this is a great example of that, and I commend Councilor Smith, and I'll certainly vote in favor of this.
And just to add too, that recall that Councilor Dwyer both sits on the reuse committee and on the Planning Board, so we do have, we have a voice that's going to bounce between two.
That's right. Again, it's a great, it's a great group. I'm really pleased with how it's working so far, and they've been given a lot to do and very early on in its life. Move the question, Your Honor. Okay, let's do it.
One last statement, Your Honor. I hope the, both the committees are aware of the covenant that's put on the academy and the Benedict House.
Yes, they have been provided that information.
Ninety-nine years, I think.
And the Planning Board will be given the same information.
Yeah, city managers and his folks have been great about that sort of information being given on the front end, minimize surprises. Let's move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes nine, nothing. Other business, questions, comments miscellaneous, unfinished. That's right. Quick reminder, October, next meeting, October 5th, Thursday, October 5th. Hopefully, that won't mess up your television viewing plans. This is your must-see TV on Thursday night. That is the other reminder. Anything else? Seeing nothing. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjournment. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Have a great evening. Aye. All those opposed? Have a great evening.[1146.15]